All right, Melanie, I think we're good to get started.
Good evening, everyone. Please be advised this webinar is going to be recorded. At the conclusion of the forum, we'll be chair a link posted the survey in the chat. Please take a moment to complete the survey on behalf of Stanford Credit to Career. Tonight's program will present with simultaneous interpretation in Spanish. Previously, on the information that we shared before, we say that we want to have Haitian Creole interpretation, but unfortunately, the person who was supposed to do the interpretation for us is not going to be available tonight. So we apologize for that. And we are going to still have the person who's going to do the Spanish interpretation at this time. And I'm going to present her. Her name is Alejandra Gorosito. Alejandra will be provide instructions in Spanish for the Spanish listener. Alejandra, I'm just going to give you a few minutes. And if you are Spanish speaker, por favor, entrese al globo que está en la parte de abajo del chat. Van a conseguir un globo que parece un mundo y van a tener la opción de seleccionar el idioma. Y pueden seleccionar el idioma de español para que puedan entender toda esta conversación en su idioma. I can't see Alejandra Loren, so let me know when she's done.
She's good. We can continue.
She's good. Okay, thank you, Alejandra. On behalf of Parent Teacher Council of Stanford and Stanford Credit to Career, welcome to the 2022 Angela Laurenti Memorial Board of Stanford Education Candidates Forum. My name is Melanie Almodórr, and I will be your moderator this evening. I joined tonight by Tracy Dink, co-president of PTO Council Executive Board. Tracy will be our timekeeper this evening. Before we meet the candidates representative from Stanford Credit to Career in the Parent Teacher Council of Stanford, we are going to share a little bit of the work that we do in the community. Please welcome Edith Presley, President of Stanford Credit to Career. Edith?
Thank you so much, Melanie. Thank you all for attending this evening. We're really excited to help sponsor this event along with the PT Council tonight. My name is Edith Presley. I'm the president of Stanford Credit to Career and really happy to be here tonight. We're a collective impact organization that really helps organize and galvanize 60 community partners right here in Stanford. And our power really is our partnership and bringing folks to the table to align strategies. And we do that in very deliberate ways with engaging the school district, the library, as well as the health department around reading initiatives, around transition services for our high school services, and really at the very early intersection point of prenatal care and zero to five early childhood services. Really happy that we are able to do those levels of services. And the why is how we do it, and that's through the vein of equity and really prioritizing chronic absenteeism, food insecurity, as well as family engagement. An example of family engagement is our upcoming Jump Start seminars. They will happen this week on Wednesday and Thursday, both for the community and family members. We encourage you to apply and register at our website. This is an opportunity for us to engage learners very early, a parent and family directed tool, because we acknowledge that teachers are really our students. I'm sorry, parents are our students first teachers. So we're happy to provide tools to the community to help achievement. I'm really happy today to help introduce our facilitator, Melanie Almodórr. Stanford Credit to Career prioritizes experting authentic voice, and Melanie is a great example of that. She's an expert in our community as well as a parent ambassador for Stanford Credit to Career. She's the mom of two students in our school district. She's a business owner. She's lived in Stanford for the past 13 years, in addition to using her time and talent to enhance access and opportunity for people in our community. What we share most is the ability to value our Stanford School District and the priority and the potential that it has, and being able to broaden that access to all members of our community. Melanie, thank you so much for agreeing to be our facilitator tonight, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Edith. Now, we're going to let Tracy is going to speak about the Parent Teacher Council of Stanford. Tracy?
Thank you, Melanie. Good evening. I'm Tracy Dinch. I have three children here in the Stanford Public Schools. This year, I am the senior president of PT Council, Parent Teacher Council of Stanford. Two of my children are at Ripley Middle School, and I have one at Hart Magnet. PT Council is the not-for-profit umbrella organization for the parent teacher organizations, PTOs of every Stanford Public School. And we work with the district and other community partners to promote positive school-family partnerships through events, workshops, leadership development initiatives. And I encourage all of you, Stanford Public School parents, excuse me, to attend our meetings. And you can find out more information on our website at StanfordPTCouncil.com. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Tracy. At this time, Riga Allen from Stanford Public Education Foundation, she's going to let us know about Angela Laurenti, for whom this event is named.
Hi, everyone. As Melanie said, I have the honor of saying a few words about Angela Laurenti, for whom this forum was named. Angela served on the Board of Education for six years, and she passed away from breast cancer in 2014 at the age of 56. Angela dedicated her life to the Stanford School System. In addition to serving on the Board of Education, she also served on the PTO boards at Springdale, Dolan, and Stanford High. She was also on the PT Council Board, including a term as president and on the board of the Stanford Public Education Foundation. The year that she passed away, a bunch of us PT Council old timers, and I see a bunch of you here on the screen, we were thinking, trying to think of a way to honor her, and we decided that renaming our forum would be perfect. We believe that every Board of Ed candidate should strive to be the type of person that she was. Angela was dedicated. Many people don't know this, but throughout her battle with breast cancer, when she was on the Board of Ed, and through many surgeries and chemo treatments, she only missed one Board of Ed meeting, and that was the day that she was diagnosed with cancer. She was also determined to get through the Friday Board packets each week, so she was prepared for the meetings. Even when she was off the board and her daughter had already graduated from Stanford Public Schools, she remained committed to keeping up to date on education issues and advocating for our children. Right before she passed away, while she was in the hospital, the night of the joint public budget hearing, and she couldn't attend, she still sent emails to the Board of Reps and the Board of Finance, asking them to support the school budget. Angela was selfless. She never had any personal agenda as a board member, and she tried to stay away from making decisions based upon politics. She was soft spoken, but powerful. She didn't run for the board to pad her resume or fuel her ego. Her focus was on doing what was best for all of our children, even when there weren't easy decisions. Eight years later, I know Angela would be proud to see how this forum has grown and have her name associated with it, to serve as a reminder to all of us about the kinds of champions for students we should all be. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigan. Now it's time to meet the candidates. There are six candidates running for the three available seats on the Board of Education. All seat candidates are here with us tonight. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and share what motivates them to run on the Board of Education. Please share why you believe your election on the Board of Education should benefit the Stanford Public Schools students. Tracy will indicate when the 30 seconds are left and when the time is up. We will proceed to, we will present them by the alphabetic order, starting with Joseph Andriana, Lisa Butler, Daniel Duprez, Michael Heyman, Diane Maicoys, and Virsha Manshusov. Thank you, candidates. We are now ready to begin questions and answers.
And Melanie, I'm just going to interrupt one second because Fritz Cherry offered to do our Haitian Creole interpretation. So I just, I just added him Fritz. I don't know if you'd like to just give some brief instructions in Haitian Creole here on the English channel, and then you can toggle to the Haitian Creole channel if you see that on your Zoom screen, and that would be great. So if you can just let us know that, that would be wonderful.
That's great.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Si vous besoin, t'as des, ça nous va dire en Creole, il y a un bouton. Ou car, ou car, t'as des tout ça en Creole, ça qui va le faire. Merci.
Thank you, Fritz. Melanie, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, we are now ready to begin the questions and answers. Candidates will have two minutes each to respond, I mean, I'm sorry, two minutes each for questions and answers. And we'll respond the six questions that we have. Please remember, this is not a debate. Every candidate will have the opportunity to answer every question. Each question will add at the chat. Tracy will alarm you with the 30-second mark and when the time is up. If this is not your turn to respond, please mute your microphone. So this will help especially to interpreters. We also ask the candidates to refrain from typing in the chat until the end of the program. When you guys will have the time to share your campaign websites and contact information for those who are watching right now. With that, we can start right now. Our first question goes to Daniel Duprez. Students across the nation-
Are we starting with intros first?
I'm sorry?
Are we starting with intros first before we jump into questions?
Daniel Duprez is the first person I'm going to ask.
Melanie, everybody gets two minutes to give their introductory remarks, starting with Joey Andriana, and then going in alphabetical order. Then we're moving into the questions.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, I don't have it in my paper. Okay, Joseph Andriana, please, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you so much to the PT Council for the opportunity tonight to speak in front of you. I'm very excited to talk to you all about who I am and why I'm running for the Board of Education. As you know, my name is Joseph Andriana Jr. I am born and raised here in Stanford. I am married to a wonderful wife, Erica, and have three kids, who are boys, or sorry, boys and girls. My twins are attending elementary school, and my daughter is attending middle school, all in SPS.
Hello, my senior staff.
I am married, sorry, I got confused there. There was some talk in the background. I am 100% invested in our Stanford schools and community, as I am a volunteer at the Little League Coach and many other community organizations. I graduated with the Journalism Mass Comm degree from St. Bonaventure University, where I also played Division One baseball. I currently work in a Stanford-based company as a project and program manager. So now, why did I decide to run for the Board of Education? Well, it was because I started watching my kids struggle to learn during the pandemic. Although my boys are twins, their learning styles couldn't be any more different. I started to pay attention to the current Board of Ed meetings and started to see more and more about the education process and felt there was too much time being spent around the politics rather than the focus on the children. As a homeowner and resident in Stanford, I want to make sure our children has the very best education and also be able to afford to continue to live in Stanford by managing the education budget and our taxes. As a project manager, I bring people together for a common goal. I lead them to be accountable and to hold true to a mission. I use my proven project management tools and metrics to make sure that we have a positive result-based experience and want to expand that into the Board of Education so we can work together for a common goal, educating our children in a safe environment for not only the teachers, but our students, paraphr- professionals and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Now we're going to give the time to Lisa Butler.
Okay, thank you so much for having me. My name is Lisa Butler. Thanks to PT Council and Cradle to Career. My, I have three children. They all attended Stanford Public Schools. My youngest is a senior at Stanford High School now. I have a son who graduated Stanford High two years ago. My oldest son, Thomas, graduated Trinity five years ago. I'm a Stanford mom. I'm not a politician. I've always been very active and engaged in the schools. I served time on the Rogers PTO, Trinity PTO. I was a parent manager for the Stanford High Boys Lacrosse Team for three years, and I hold a leadership role for the Stanford High School Governance Council. My biggest accomplishment was being part of the revitalization of the Stanford High School courtyard. About five years ago, I came across the courtyard when my son was a sophomore. It had been neglected for about 13 years. When I asked about it, people said, oh, it's just always been like that. Together, working with parents, the Board of Ed, and the mayor's office, we were able to get this project done. Interestingly, though, the money had been approved and set aside by the Board of Ed, but the Board of Ed had no idea the project wasn't done. So I want to focus on school projects that the Board of Ed sets money aside for and make sure they're completed. Why did I choose to run now? Everyone's asking me. They said, your daughter's done. Well, my daughter is a senior, and I want to give this position 110% of my time and give back to the community. I feel it's crucial we raise the academic-
You have 30 seconds?
I feel it's crucial we raise the academic standards for all children, adding additional supports in place for those that need it, so they can leave high school with the skills that are needed to move on to college, trade school, or direct to work. We need to do better for all our students so they can achieve their dreams. I'm also, I'm also passionate that our students and our teachers work in every day. I want to be part of the team that makes sure all of our buildings support a safe learning environment. These are just a few examples of why I'm running for a seat on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Lisa. Now, Daniel Duprez.
Hi, good evening, and thank you to everyone that's organized this tonight, and certainly everyone watching for taking the time to be involved in your local government and to come out and, and learn more about the candidates so that you can make a educated decision on Election Day. My name is Dan Duprez. I'm a current member of the Stanford Board of Education. I've done one term there. I serve as the Board Secretary, and I'm also the Chair of the Fiscal Committee. I was born in Stanford, and I've lived here most of my life, after having moved back after having lived in New York and Washington for a short time. I chose Stanford as the place to raise my family, including my young son, who is a West Hill High School class of 2038, unbelievably. I serve on the Board of Stanford EMS, and I've been a volunteer firefighter in Stanford for 20 years. When I was initially approached to run for the Board of Education in 2019, you know, I considered it deeply, and after some thought, came to the conclusion that it was one of the places where citizens could have an effect on perhaps the most important component of what government, local government, gives us all, and that is a good education for our children. And I have been diligent about my service on the board, and in particular, in the last year, helping to-
30 seconds.
Thank you. In the last year, helping to shepherd the budget through. This year, we had a $301 million budget, which is, we are using, we're doing our best to undo the scourge of COVID, which unfortunately still sticks with us in the form of test scores and other issues. So I look forward to these questions tonight and another term on the board to be able to continue to do the good work that I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duprez. Now, Michael Heyman.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the organizations who have made this happen. Well, my name is Michael Heyman, and I'm a 30-year resident of Stanford. I've been involved with our Stanford Public Schools as a school administrator, as the school-to-career leader for internships for students, and was one of the original creators of the AIT before it had its E. That founding of that organization, I'm really quite proud of because it has lasted in a way that many of us didn't even envision. But it lasted also in the face of the risk that people took to make it happen. So I'm extremely pleased with that. As a father of four students or young people who have graduated from college, I know something about what it takes to raise young people into good and thriving individuals as well. And I bring part of that perspective with me. As a community activist, I have been involved with many of the life-changing and quality programs that work for young people, regardless of their color, regardless of their zip codes or where they live. And so that I find it beneficial to our town that in this particular effort,
30 seconds.
Every few years, there's a sobering effort where people get together to choose the leaders to provide service to all of us. And I think that I have those particular skills and capabilities to be of service to Stanford. And that's my desire, to continue this work, to make our school system the very best as possible for all children.
Thank you. Diane Malkioni.
Great, thanks. Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's a very first one for me, and I certainly echo everyone's gratitude to the PT Council and Cradle to Career for organizing and hosting all of us candidates. And for those of you watching and tuning in, I know you're competing with dinner, kids needing help with homework, back time, bedtime, a gubernatorial debate. And throughout it all, I really hope you're enjoying a glass of wine on our behalf. So a quick intro to me. My name is Diane Malkioni. I'm an enthusiastic, sometimes overly loud, but incredibly proud lifelong Stanford resident, a first-generation American, and a graduate of our very school system, where I attended Springdale Elementary, Dolan Middle, and Stanford High. My husband Anthony and I are high school sweethearts, one of the many things I'm grateful to Stanford Public Schools for. And we have two beautiful children together. Our daughter Ryland is four and a half, and she'll be going into kindergarten next year. And our son Anthony will turn three this month. After high school, I went on to study and graduate from the University of Connecticut, Stanford. And after that, I joined an early-stage, 40-person tech startup, named Indeed. I climbed the corporate ladder to the executive level, helped build the company into a globally recognizable brand, and one of Stanford's greatest employers. In my career, I've hired thousands of people around the world in almost every continent and been responsible for operating budgets of over $100 million. And this year, I also began serving as an advisor to other tech startups.
Diane, you have 30 seconds.
I'm running for Board of Education first and foremost because I'm a mom. I'm a mom who cares about the educational foundation we are giving not only my children, but all of our children. With a solid academic foundation in life, we can nearly guarantee a child's future independence, success, and happiness. And as parents, there's no greater gift that we can give to our children. But I'm also running because I love the city, and I think there comes a time in our lives where we look back to our community and see where we can help, where help is needed.
Thank you, Diane. Virsha Manshusov.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the PT Council and Cradle to Career for the important work that you do, and also for creating this opportunity for us to come together. I'm Virsha Manshusov. I'm a proud Stanford Public Schools mom with my daughter in seventh grade at Schofield and my son in ninth grade at West Hill. I'm a product of public education. I love schools, and when I was growing up, I always wanted to be a teacher. And I've been so fortunate to work in education for over 20 years, starting as a teacher's assistant on the South Side of Chicago when I was in college. I've since worked as a teacher, as an instructional coach, as a principal. And for the last six years, I've worked as a consultant for a national education nonprofit. I'm lucky enough to spend my days in schools with principals and in district offices with superintendents and district leaders, focused on the work of running schools, whether that be teacher retention and recruitment, choosing and implementing new curriculum, providing professional development for new teachers and leaders, or using data to create strategic plans. My family moved to Stanford from New York City because we were in search of a great school system with a diversity of students and strong teachers and staff. And we have found that here in Stanford, and we've had many positive experiences in the last several years. I'm running for Board of Ed because I want schools to get even better. We have so many opportunities here in Stanford, and we have some great things happening in every field. I want to bring my expertise from working in schools, with schools throughout the country.
First, you have 30 seconds.
My experience running a school building, my knowledge and skills in teaching kids how to read, and my insight as a public school parent to our Board of Ed. I look forward to collaborating with the district and other members of the Board of Ed, so we can focus on what's important, physical safety, mental health, teaching and learning, and partnering with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Virsha. Thank you, candidates. We are now ready to begin questions and answers. Candidates, we have two minutes each to respond six questions. Please remember, this is not a debate. Every candidate will have the opportunity to answer every question. Each question will be added to the chat. Tracy, as you know, she's going to let you know when the 30-second mark and when your time is up. If this is, if this is not your turn, please mute your microphone, especially, this will help especially for the interpreters. We also ask the candidates to refrain from typing on the chat until the end of the program. At the end of the program, you will have the opportunity to share your campaign websites and contact information for those people who are watching this webinar. With that, let's start. Our first question goes to Daniel Duprez. Students across the nation experience learning loss due to the pandemic. Here in Stanford, the percentage of students who met or passed standards in math and English language are dropped in 2022 compared to 2019. What steps can the Board of Education take to address the COVID-19-related learning loss and the whining achievement gap to the groups, including Black students, Spanish students, English language learners, and financial disadvantaged students?
Thank you, Melanie. It's a really, really important question. And, you know, I'm actually glad when I'm asked this question, and I've been asked it frequently because it's, you know, it's an important statistic that we have to deal with as a result of what was the greatest interruption in, you know, formal schooling ever. Not even the World War has interrupted formal schooling to the degree that COVID did. And so I believe that there are several things that we can do to work on remedying this issue. But primarily, primarily, one of the, one of the things that we can do, which, which will have quick effects, is to focus on, identify and focus on particular groups of students that were impacted more strongly than others. In particular, those students that were in kindergarten, first, and second grade when COVID occurred. You know, because this is the essential time period during the educational process when students, when we teach students to read. And deficiencies in reading will continue to cause problems for those, that cohort of students as time goes on. That's a cohort we need to focus on, and I'm heavily supportive of programs and other strategies to be used. programs and other strategies to be used to combat that specific groups, you know, the issues that were related to COVID separately but relatedly, you know,
Diane, 30 seconds.
engaging the community, the entire community, from parents to, you know, teachers and parent and teacher organizations, outside organizations, and educational organizations such as the Stanford Public Education Foundation in creating a holistic approach to student success is a way that we can combat the unfortunate gaps, you know, the achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
Oh, hi, everyone. Thank you. Yes, it's a big question. Nationally, there's learning loss. That's all we hear about in the news. I worry about this every day. I worry about how this will impact all our students. But I agree, it has widened the achievement gap for Black students, Hispanic students, EL learners, and disadvantaged students. But remember, we were experiencing learning loss prior to COVID, and we can't look backwards, but we can only look forward. I feel the district should use more of their S R money that the government sent to make sure that we're offering quality programs in order to try and remediate some of the learning loss. We can offer in-school tutoring and after-school tutoring. We can also partner with our community-based organizations like Beyond Limits, the Boys and Girls Club, and SPAF, and have them offer additional services to these struggling students. We should also consider offering a summer remediation program for any student who's struggling, which was offered two years ago, and make it mandatory. We can't continue to push children to the next grade level if they have not mastered the content from the prior grade. While it's not a favorable approach, I worry that pushing kids ahead will only make the problem worse in the long run.
Thank you. Michael Hyman.
The idea that, as Mr. Du Place mentioned, that this has probably been the largest single impact on our education system the world has ever known. We've not done this before. We've not been in this place before. But learning loss is something that another speaker mentioned was occurring before for many students, the achievement gap. If we're able to bridge the challenge of what has happened with the learning loss that has occurred here, we should very well be able to work on the achievement gap itself that was present before the COVID impact occurred. But one of the things that has happened is that we've suffered a learning loss, but the entire world has, the entire country has, at the same time. And so in that zero-sum game, we've not lost anything other than our will to get to work on making sure that our students can in fact learn. To do that, I think that we need to use some of the time-tested things that we've tried in the past, but never persistent with, and that is to have a deeper collaboration, a deeper involvement after school, but also with parents and teachers, that we need to redouble our efforts and the work that we do with students inside of schools. And the assessments of where they stand.
Diane, 30 seconds.
The assessments of where they stand, as well as what will remediate and what will assist with their growing and learning better. But I'm not concerned about what we lost. I'm concerned about how quickly we move ahead with what we already have.
Thank you. Next is Joseph Andriana.
Thank you. That's a great question. I want to go out and compliment the school district on how we implemented summer learning by our superintendent in the past, kind of help with alleviating some of the learning loss from COVID and the pandemic. So we have been trying to do some things already, and, you know, we want to build upon that. And, you know, there's a lot of kids that have been impacted, reading, writing, arithmetic. And by using data to support what children have lost or are losing, some of the learning development, we can actually look to target some programs to assist those kids with what they need. Now, what I would love to do, if I'm on the board, is look at some of those programs by partnering with, as people have called out today, SPAF, Cradle to Career, Boys and Girls Club, the Yearwood Center, and all the different organizations across Stanford that we have to help our kids. We need to engage our community a little more and try to hear what is needed across all of Stanford, because we need to make sure that all of our kids are getting the learning and development that they need. You know, I want to focus not on the world, but what Stanford needs. Stanford needs some assistance, and we shouldn't look at everyone else. We should be asking the question, what do our Stanford children need to eliminate some of the learning loss? And I truly believe it is investing and partnering with what Stanford and this great city has to offer and what has already been built with our school system and building upon it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Virsha Manshi South.
Thank you for starting with this question, which is really focusing us on academics, which is the primary purpose of school. And so we want to think about with teaching and learning is primarily, yes, we do have money and funding and ideas for extra supports, remedial supports for kids, and we're going to need that and we should be using it. However, we need to start first with kids' primary instruction. Is what they're getting in their ELA classes, in their math classes, in their core content areas, is that the very best that they can be getting right now? And in order to really assess that, we need our principals to function as instructional leaders. We need our principals to be in the classroom, giving feedback to teachers, assessing the quality of lessons, and really ensuring that our kids are getting an excellent instructional experience in the places where they spend most of their day. We also need to frequently progress monitor, meaning that we're not holding kids in remedial instruction. We know that many kids have suffered from learning loss, and for every kid, it's really, really different. So we need to have ways that we're frequently assessing to see where are kids and where can they be pushed further? Because what we don't want to do is hold kids in remedial instruction indefinitely, just assuming that they need many supports, when actually they might be ready to do something new. They might be ready to read a harder book. They might be ready for more advanced math. So this cycle of data collection and progress monitoring is so important so that we're not holding kids just assuming that everyone has lost the same level of learning.
30 seconds.
But that everyone has a chance to progress. And what I'd add to that is that we are trying many new programs and innovative solutions, tutoring, partnering with various organizations. Again, we need to look at the effectiveness of each of these ideas and then double down on the ones that are working. And those should really inform, what are we doing in summer school? What are we doing next year? Out of all the things we're trying, what's been effective? And what do we want to continue doing as we move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Malkioni.
Great. I think I'm rounding us out on this question. I'd echo a lot of the things that were already said, you know. It was mentioned that our scores were on the decline prior to COVID. I certainly echo that. If you look at our math S back scores, for example, on EdSite, they've been on the decline since 2016, and that's as far back as EdSite reports. So, you know, I think there's a lot of work to be done, not only because of the COVID learning loss, but just in general. You know, Joe, Lisa, and I have been doing a lot of school visits. I think we've visited 60% of our schools this year. And there's some really interesting things that are happening. So, for example, Davenport offers Saturday School. How can we get Saturday School popping up in more of our elementary schools? Or at least, how can we get more students to Saturday School at Davenport, for example? Are there opportunities for our high school seniors to mentor and help and work with our younger students? I think there's opportunities as well. There's a lot of ed tech, education technology companies out there. One of them is Elevation. They focus predominantly on English language learners. I actually had a conversation with them recently. There's districts around the country using them. That might be a technology that we can help students really come alive and onboard and learn. What are some additional resources and things that we can send home for parents to integrate learning into their home lives? Are there games that can teach kids? I think there's a piece of the puzzle that the school certainly has, but also there's opportunities and ways for us to get community, parents, families to really embrace learning and help our students get back to where they were, and then certainly excel beyond that.
Thank you. The second question goes to Joseph Andriana. I started by the National Center for Educational Statistics in March 2022. Found that 44% of public schools report teaching vacancies. Feeling vacancies and retaining educators is a challenge for Stanford. What can the borough education do to ensure that Stanford Public Schools hire and retain high-quality teachers for every schools? And what does Stanford's education feel support and value?
So the first thing I want to do is acknowledge that we have tremendous teachers. We have great principals. And it would be a detriment if we lose any of our great teachers or principals, not only to our schools, but also to our students. When you look at things, you want to look at why people leave and why people don't want to continue doing what they're doing. And the majority of the time is because they don't feel appreciated or they don't feel valued. If that's the case, people will leave, and that is something we don't want to do. I've already proposed to many people, teachers and the SEA, that I will hold a monthly call for the teachers and the SEA to have a direct line to talk to me. Because I need to make sure that their voices are being heard on the board because they are valued. And we need to make sure that they have a message, a voice, and a representation on the board to help them. Now, when it comes to the recruiting, I want to partner with schools and programs, colleges, much like HBCU, and expand upon RISE so we can help recruit more diverse teachers, as well as teachers who are just graduating and interested into coming into Stanford. I also want to work on the collective bargaining agreement to make sure that we are addressing the concerns of the teachers and also looking at, but not limited to, maternity and paternity leave, which teachers get 0% paid. And that is a detriment when you have young teachers trying to come into the workforce.
Thank you. Michael Hyman.
Thank you. That is obviously a wonderful question because within our schools, we can't have schools without teachers. I mean, they and the students, but the teachers make the difference. Certainly, they're building relationships with students, but the relationships that they must have with the community, with the central office, that idea of feeling respected and needed is certainly something that is very important. Because if teachers don't feel that way, then we must know that the education that they will be providing to the students in front of them, some of that will rub off on them in a negative way. So we want to make sure that our teachers are, in fact, reasonably happy about being with the Stanford Public Schools, that they're motivated, that they want to be here in this particular place. We can do some of that from the very beginning with how we recruit people. The mentioning of HBCUs and utilizing them to diversify our school systems, I think is an important one. It's something that has been tried before. We need to make sure that we continue. My concern about the Stanford schools is that in our relationships, that we don't persist long enough to ensure that we've got a good foundation for the relations between the central office and our teachers, the unions, but also with other organizations that are so important to us.
Michael, 30 seconds.
We cannot, we cannot provide an environment that is good for schoolteachers to be in this particular location without looking at all of the factors. I met with a schoolteacher who lives in Bridgeport. She'd love to live here in Stanford. She's concerned about when the weather is bad, how will she make it home so that she's not charged an additional hour for her child? We've got to look at holistically at what do we do and go back to the drawing board again. I think we've got, I think we have an opportunity to do that with the new administration of Ms. Torres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Malkioni.
Thank you. This question is near and dear to my heart. So just to recap, we're talking about the teacher shortage, how do we fill vacancies, retain educators. As somebody who has worked her entire career in recruitment and talent acquisition, this one is super important. So there's a few things I think that we can be doing in terms of attracting candidates. Job sites like Indeed, Glassdoor, LinkedIn, they have employer branding on there. There's an opportunity for employees to go and rate their employers. And so improving our employer brand on those sites will attract job seekers. Job seekers and candidates check out employer brands before they apply to jobs. So ensuring that we have really strong presence on those sites will improve attraction. You know, I think there's something to look at in terms of ways that we can incentivize teachers to tap into their networks and refer people. You know, referral bonuses are certainly something that happens in the private sector, and that would come at a cost, but there's something that maybe we can think about really creatively on ways that we can do that. I think we have to think about actively sourcing candidates from outside of Connecticut. There might be people that really want to live close to New York City but be in the suburbs. There's some PR that we could be doing there. Other things that come to mind in terms of retaining high-quality educators, I'd love
Diane, 30 seconds.
better understand our employee engagement results, do some stay interviews. I think either the BOE or Central Office can be doing some stay interviews, which are just one-on-one conversations with teachers and staff that have been here forever, and understand why they continue to stay. And then lastly, I'd plug Indeed's actually partnering with the White House on the teacher shortage and offering recruitment dollars to advertise jobs on Indeed to hire teachers. So would really look to work with Charmaine on our recruitment efforts.
Thank you. Daniel Du Place.
Thank you. And I also want to just comment that this kind of question is what makes me really sort of excited to serve on the board. You know, obviously, we have members of two parties here, but every single person has given a very, very positive answer. I think everyone has given a little bit of a different contribution to what they think would improve our teacher recruitment and retention. And so it makes me very happy that, you know, whoever does win on Election Day, we will be well-served. So I'd like to just extend a brief thanks to the other candidates for that. In terms of specific teacher recruitment and retention, I mean, it's a problem everywhere. And I think there's a couple of reasons that it's a problem everywhere. I think the other, you know, the other candidates have sort of touched on a number of those reasons. I think there are things that can be done with the collective bargaining agreement. I think there are incentives that we could put in place. I think that we could engage a little bit differently with, you know, how we recruit, where we recruit, and that sort of thing. But I think what I would sort of like to give a more global answer is that Stanford Public Schools would be well-served, we would increase our recruitment. We would have success in a lot of areas if we increased the way we approach, or rather, we changed the way we approach public relations. We live in an era where, you know, things are, you know, they're tweets, they're short, they're Instagram, they're social media, and
Diane, 30 seconds.
engaging with people on that level and generally improving the stature of the Stanford Public Schools through a targeted media campaign is going to pay dividends in many, many areas, and not the least of which, I think, is teacher recruitment and retention. You know, there are a lot of people that are choosing where in the tri-state area to locate their families. Connecticut's an excellent place. Stanford's an excellent place. We just have to sort of let them know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
Hi, thank you for the question. I have a lot of family and friends that are teachers in the school district, and I truly feel like they are the crown jewels of our school system. I'm really hopeful that Charmaine Davis, the new Director of Talent and Recruitment, I'm really hopeful that Charmaine Davis, the new Director of Talent and Recruitment, will have some great strategies in place. But some of the ideas that I had was let, let's look at a positive public relations campaign, a day in the life of a teacher in, in, in the Stanford Public School District. You know, our world is so full of social media. Perhaps we need to, you know, send out a campaign with all the positives. And Stanford High just had the Pink Out. I, I saw so many teachers there participating. They're all excited to be part of the community. It was really a special day. I also think we need to continue to get teacher feedback. On the campaign trail, we came across so many retired teachers, current teachers. And it's really important to continue the dialogue with them and find out what exactly they like or don't like, uh, and take their feedback seriously. We know teacher morale can be low. They're overloaded right now. And, you know, they're wearing a lot of hats in the classroom. There's a shortage of subs, so they're having to fill in, um, you know, various classrooms during their prep time. So maybe what we need to do is entice civilians to be substitute teachers as well, uh, to alleviate some of the pressure on our schoolteachers. I also think one of the things that
Lisa thirty seconds.
I think one of the important things that'll help the teachers is we have a standard curriculum across the board. I think a lot of teachers are sourcing this on their own. And that could be very stressful. The last thing I would say is we need to reform the hiring practices and look at what other districts are doing. Maybe we need to hire more part-time help during the hiring season, just because there's a lot going on during that timeframe. And, um, you know, we, but we have to do, we have to do whatever we can to retain our and attract new ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Bersha Monchi South.
So first, I would just say, um, that we should acknowledge, and I think that we can't acknowledge enough the hard work that our teachers did in spring of 2020. We asked them to do what was unthinkable at the time. And still even now, knowing what happened, it's hard to really imagine that we went from teaching a hundred percent in person to everything online, in Google Classroom. Kids are at home. Teachers are teaching kids how to read. They needed to be engaged on a computer. No one had ever done that before in the way that we have to do it, that teachers did it, and they did it. And, and we have to not lose sight of that because what, what they did was innovate. They learned new technology. They learned a lot of new engagement strategies, how to keep an eight-year-old engaged in a, on a computer all day. Uh, we need to teach, treat teachers like the professionals that they are, knowing that they're capable of this adaptive work and they're capable of being really flexible. And their jobs might need to be more flexible too. So I would echo some of the more traditional strategies that others have said. So certainly digging into, um, engagement data, exit survey data, why are teachers leaving? Coordinating with the S E A to understand more about the teacher experience. Um, I would say that we need more frequent pulse checks with teachers, not just a yearly survey or, you know, um, two times a year survey, but really more frequently finding out how things are going, what's going well, what's not going well, much more frequent of a feedback loop.
Bersha thirty seconds.
But I would also say we need to think outside of the box and really consider how we can reimagine the role of a teacher. Teaching is an incredibly inflexible job. You need to be there really early in the morning. Your days off are planned in advance. Meanwhile, the rest of us are on Zoom. We have flexibility. We might walk our dog during the day. How do we bring more of that flexibility into the role of the teacher? We can't be afraid to innovate like that when it comes to the role of teacher because all other industries are doing it and we will continue to lose teachers.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Third question goes to Michael Hyman. Forty-eight percent of the Stanford Public Schools' students are identified as Hispanic. Do you believe that the, that the district is going, is doing enough to support those students and families? And what more should the district do in to engage this community and ensure they are represented in the decision-making process?
Well, that's, that is an excellent question. Uh, I do believe that, uh, with forty-eight percent of the student population and, and growing here in Stanford, that they must be engaged. We must move every mountain possible to ensure that families, um, that have newly arrived to this country, who have been here for some time, that they are in fact engaged and to have a sense of belonging inside the Stanford Public Schools. Uh, there are organizations that, um, that I was a part of, the, the Neighbor's Link Program, which became B one C. Uh, the idea of supporting, uh, those families and making sure that they were engaged. And not only that, but they felt empowered, uh, to speak their own minds about what was going on. It's one thing for some of us to get up and speak on their behalf. It's quite another that they too are empowered to speak on their behalf and their desire of what they want. Uh, we saw something like that just recently at one public event where they stood up and said, this wasn't exactly how it should have been. We needed to have been included and to make sure that the services were there. I believe that the Stanford Public Schools is, uh, beginning. And we're not done yet. We're beginning to recognize all of the deeds of our students across the board with equity. Uh, but to get there means that those of us who have, uh,
Michael thirty seconds.
Those of us who have maybe not noticed in the past or not been concerned about it, that we're going to demand that this, this particular school board, the new one, that it will actually look at and try to work closely with all of the families in this town. And certainly the Hispanic, Latino, Latinx families are important enough to us that we need to make sure that it happens and their voices are heard.
Thank you. Diane McKeon.
Sorry, there was a pop-up there. Um, yeah, you know, I, I, I would say that in the, the experience that I've seen so far, our district has been very thoughtful about the way that we engage with and represent our Hispanic student population. From Mike Myers Office of Family and Community Engagement, um, we've hired parent facilitators. And, you know, uh, in speaking with some principals throughout our school district, they've just highlighted how important our parent facilitators are with, um, not only translations, but ensuring that we have resources for schools, for, um, our Hispanic community. But I think we can continue to evolve and improve our engagement. Not only just with our Hispanic community, but anybody who could leverage additional resources as well. I think that, um, you know, at a Boys and Girls Club event last week Lisa and I attended, there was a mom who was saying that, you know, if we can move some student, um, or parent and school night activities to different areas within the city, it could increase the, the amount of people that show up. That certainly seems like something we should think about and how we can, um, engage more of our Hispanic community and parents and teachers. You know, I would also say that there are corporate sponsors out there that are looking for opportunities to, uh, contribute to their community. So if, um, there are any families struggling with transportation to any of these events, um, I, you know, I think there's a way to tap into corporate sponsors to sponsor, um, Uber or Lyft rides to get people to those events, um, especially. So I think there's a number of ways that we are already engaged with and are really thoughtful about our Hispanic community, but certainly other ways that we can also improve.
Thank you. Bersha Monchi South.
Thank you. Yeah, and so I'd echo, you know, there is quite a bit of work being done, um, through the Office of Family and Community Engagement, certainly through the parent facilitators in schools and through variety of school and district staff who have managed to, um, engage and have deep relationships with Hispanic families throughout the district. One important thing to note, and, and this goes back to this idea of a feedback loop, is that our Hispanic families are not a monolith. And so this idea that, you know, Spanish language translation, interpretation, yes, we do need that. We need that all the time, um, given the percentage of our, um, Hispanic families in the district. But that should be the floor, not the ceiling. And to really understand what else we need, we have to hear from families. We have to hear from students. Not all of our Hispanic students are multilingual learners. Not all of the parents speak only Spanish and not English. So we shouldn't make assumptions about what it is that all Hispanic families need because we have folks from countries all around Latin America and have been here for varying amounts of time and certainly have different needs. And so what I would say we need to do is have more ways, more diverse ways from hearing for all of our families and really being able to disaggregate that data. So when we look at things like survey data, we're looking specifically at our Hispanic families. And then even with that, what are the variety of needs that they are naming? What are the things that are going well? And what are the ways that we can support them more? And this piece around what are the things that are going well?
Bersha thirty seconds.
Really studying what are the schools that are really just hitting it out of the park with engaging Hispanic families specifically? And how can those practices be spread throughout the district? So that's really breaking down the silos between individual schools and opening up those bright spots so that everyone can learn and benefit from them.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
Melanie, would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. Forty-eight percent of this, of the Stanford Public Schools' students are identified as Hispanic. Do you believe that the district is doing enough to support those students and families? And what more you, what more should the district be doing to engage this community and ensure that they are represented by the decision-making process?
Great, thank you so much. I definitely think we're making strides, but I don't think we're there yet, uh, for families and students. Um, it's only been a year that the Board of Ed, uh, has brought a translator for all the meetings, which I recall listening to several meetings last year where parents advocated for quite some time for a translator. And I'm happy to see we now have translation and I applaud those parents' efforts, um, to continue to, um, push for it. We have a very large Hispanic population. When we were, when Diane mentioned we were at the Boys and Girls Club last week, we, we got to talk to so many people there. And a lot of them were just saying, you know, they don't feel, they don't feel connected. They would love to see some of them, uh, you know, like open school night in their community, especially since, um, so many of the kids travel from the South End all the way up to Roxbury and in that area. Maybe we look at housing some of those events in community centers down in the South End so that we could get more participation. We also should look at doing Board of Ed meetings at schools instead of always at the government center. And, um, we just, um, uh, last year, we were bringing someone on for the, uh, Stanford High School Governance Council, and we made sure that we brought someone in that represented the Hispanic community. And, you know, this, this person's been great. It's invaluable, the, the information they bring and their ideas and their suggestions. It's also great to hear how families are feeling and what we can do to help. So there's definitely more that we can do. And hopefully, if I'm on the Board of Ed, I will work with that community and, um, make it happen.
Thank you. Daniel, do please.
Thank you very much. I, uh, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this question. And I, I grew up in a family where we spoke two languages. My grandparents came from Cuba nineteen sixty-one to Stanford. And, you know, so I've had in my family the experience of being in a linguistic minority, certainly seeing what that, how that, how that, you know, alters the way people navigate things. And I think it's important that we recognize that there are a high percentage of students in Stanford that are in that position. But not only those students, but, but their families as well, um, that might not be in the position to be in the same sort of decision-making, have the same decision-making power that, that English-speaking parents might have. One of the big innovations that we've been able to, to, to do this year is report cards will now be available in Spanish. And I believe Haitian Creole, but certainly Spanish. But, um, small things like this and ways to engage families of our English language learning students probably is the most important concrete step that we can take, to, to really facilitate them getting their maximal educational attainment, uh, even though they may have some challenges with the language. You know, our, the programs that deal with our newly arrived students, new arrivals, as well as the bilingual and E L L programs.
Diane thirty seconds.
You know, they, they do tremendous work every day. I try and make sure to visit one of those classrooms every time I visit a school that houses such a program. But I think another important thing that, that we could do is take the schools that have a high bilingual population and share some of the ideas that principals and teachers there have learned. Uh, I think another one of the candidates mentioned this, but, you know, we have an embarrassment of riches in our teachers and principals all across the district and, and making sure that we share that knowledge as much as possible is, is important.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Andriana.
No, thank you for this question. As I've been walking and knocking on two thousand doors here in Stanford, I've been talking to many families, including, uh, Hispanic families all across Stanford. And, you know, although translation is important, it is less about translation and more about representation in the workforce and in central office. We need to be more inclusive of our forty-eight point nine percent. As I've been saying while door knocking, quiero trabajar por las familias hispanas. I will work with Hispanic families. I am currently trying to work on getting a forum set up with some people that I know to get some rooms and facilities so we can all meet and talk. It's about the representation in the workforce and making sure that our forty-eight point nine percent has a voice and is included. And that's what I'm going to do while I'm on the board, is make sure we can get and have policies to help them be included in our central office.
Thank you. The fourth question goes to Lisa Butler. The district has set the funding for a hundred and twenty jobs, including kindergarten parrot educators, technology integration support specialist, security workers, family and community engagement liaison, and teachers. And is set to expire on the next two years because of those jobs are currently paid through the Federal Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Do you believe it's important to retain those jobs? And how do, how do you propose the Borough Education Fund? It's approximately eight point eight million needed for those positions.
Well, yes, um, I remember seeing the article in the newspaper regarding this called the fiscal cliff. Most of these positions were cut during COVID. The S R funds were used to fund most of these positions. They're all very important positions. They, they're, it's funding our security guards so that kids and teachers feel safe in our schools, which is a high priority for me. Kindergarten parent educators, which is also very important. You know, the classes are large and you're getting a lot of kids that haven't had any formal, um, preschool education. So that's very important. Crisis social workers are also important. Parent facilitators, facilitator, sorry, and so many more. So we as a board are going to need to look at the entire budget. We know that all of these are very important positions and we're going to need to find ways to keep them in place. We're going to need to focus on school security as well as learning loss. I really can't imagine taking any of this away right now. The other thing that we, on our school tours, we found out that so many of the schools do not have media, media paras, I guess is what they call. So we have libraries that are going unused and empty, which is really sad to see, especially in the state of, um, you know, the condition of, you know, kids need to read more. And perhaps if they're in the library, they'll take a book out. So I have to say that, um, it's something that is of huge concern and we'll have to look at every position and make a decision, um, come, you know, come two years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Bersha Monchi South.
Thank you. So, I mean, in some ways, we really have been so fortunate to have this funding come through because as we talked about with learning loss, with academics, and certainly we haven't gotten too much yet, is this a social emotional impact that this pandemic has had on our kids? And so, yes, these adults are very important. Paras, tech specialists, security workers. We need our kids to feel safe, emotionally safe, physically safe. And we need them to have enough adults in their buildings who can do those jobs. So we know that everyone who's there right now is very much needed. And I would say a couple of things. One, we need to ensure that we're maximizing all those folks in their positions right now. And that really requires hearing And that really requires hearing from principals about schedules, about roles and responsibilities. What are the ways that all of these new positions are being used in every school and are they being maximized? And how do we, similar to the academic supports, how do we collect data now on what really is most effective? Because while we would like to ideally fund everything continuously forever, the fact is we may not be able to. And so we do need to have a process of collecting data on an ongoing basis so that when it comes time maybe to have to make some cuts, we can be really strategic and data-driven when it comes to making those decisions. That being said, we make, we may say, actually, we really need all of, all of these positions. There's nothing that can be cut.
Thirty seconds.
And that's really going to be require our Board of Ed to work closely with our city, with our Board of Finance, bring that data and really make a case for why these positions are so essential, the impact they've had on student experience and student learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Andriana.
Can you repeat the question to make sure I have it in its entirety?
Sure. The district has set the founding for a hundred and twenty jobs, including kindergarten for paraeducator, technology integration for support specialist, security workers, family and community engagement liaison and teachers. But that will expire in the next two years because of those jobs are currently paid through the Federal Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Release Fund. Do you believe it's important to retain those jobs? And how do you propose the Boral Education Fund approximately eight point eight million needed for those positions?
Thank you. So the first thing I want to say is we are fortunate to have these staff members to keep our kids safe, to keep our kids learning and to keep our kids engaged. As a child of a Stanford sped paraeducator, we definitely need them. And we need to make sure that they're there to help our kids. To, the other aspect of it is I'm a son-in-law to a paraeducator in kindergarten. So one hundred percent, we need to make sure that we find the money and do what we need to do to keep and retain these quality people that are helping our schools succeed. With that, I want to leverage my program management experience to see what is working and trying to get our, retain, oh, sorry, starting to get the return on our investments. So I want to assess what are we doing well and what are we not? I think we need a full financial audit to make sure that we are spending our tax dollars wisely and appropriating our money accordingly to ensure that we can find savings and that we're spending the money where it belongs and not wasting money. And I'm sure we can find eight point eight million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hyman.
Well, you know, the idea of finding eight point eight million dollars is, is not the easiest thing to do. We've been here in, in this town in Stanford where we've had cuts of half that amount as we've struggled to, to find those dollars. So as, as bad as it may sound, you know, we, we've got a hundred and twenty jobs that we'd love to keep. There was a reason why we actually funded or used the money from, from the federal government to fund those jobs in the first place. No one wants to get rid of them. But I, I, I would have to say that as a leader and board members would be leaders, you know, finding the money is one thing, going back to the public and explaining that if we really wanted to make that happen, let's assume we found all of the places to cut the dollars out of the budget and there was no fat there, but we were still short. Then having the stomach to go back to the public and say to the taxpayer, we've done everything possible to make this work, but now we need to talk with you about taxes. Most times, most politicians run from that idea because nobody wants to raise taxes. I certainly don't. No one wants to ask for it at all, but let's not be naive. Eight point eight million dollars in the next couple of years is a tough dollar amount to find within Stanford Public Schools with taxpayers. And so we need to be certain that we're going to be truthful. We're going to look this in the eye and decide, how do we make this happen? We know it's coming. So let's figure this out together, but let's talk earnestly with the public about this, but not in, in a dreamland.
Thank you. Taya McKeone.
Thank you. You know, I, I really want to start off just by applauding our district for hiring and getting these roles in place. I would say things like security workers were really top of mind for a lot of parents in the district. And as an executive, I've certainly had to make hard decisions when it came, when it comes to headcount, allocation, growth. And I've also had to get really creative on ways that we can ensure our needs are met when costs are decreased. But to answer your question, my gut reaction is that these roles are necessary. When you hear from parents that their, their son's longtime paraeducator got moved to another school and that son no longer has the paraeducator he was really familiar with. And there's a shortage and they, you know, can't get somebody else to help him. That you see how much that impacts a student. And so when we think about our roles overall and we, comes time to evaluating this, we have to understand what are the roles that interact with children? What is the data that we have that shows that these are integral roles? And can we find that budget either through Stanford's budget and asking for the Board of Finance to shift budget more to the Board of Ed? Or should our state representatives get more from the state? Our current BOE budget is funded by eighty-two percent of local tax dollars. Other districts in the state are getting far more support from the state. So how can we also leverage our state representatives to get additional budget? So those are just some things that are percolating in my head.
Thank you. Daniel, do please.
Thank you. Yeah. So I think this question is, you know, a difficult one because it, it implicates something that is a responsibility of a board member, but very often is an overlooked responsibility of a board member. And that is that the board members are ultimately lobbyists for the board, for the Stanford Public Schools. The town of Darien and the town of New Canaan both expend approximately seventy percent of their town budgets on the school system. In Stanford, it's forty-eight. We expended seventy percent of our town budget on the school system. We would have a budget over three hundred and forty million, which is almost ten percent higher, more, about twelve percent higher than it is now. Stanford Public School System needs money to operate. We are a very large system. We have sixteen thousand students, twelve, thirteen hundred teachers and countless staff members. And, you know, unfortunately, years have taken their toll and COVID. We saw a, a zero percent increase in the Board of Education budget. And the reality is that Stanford is growing. We continue to grow. And Stanford has to make the investments into the system if they want to see the system succeed. And so the, the, the major role that I see myself playing in the, in the coming budget year, certainly, which is when we're going to start to experience the first fiscal cliff, so to speak, is to ensure that the Board of Finance and the Board of Representatives understands the gravity of the situation. If, if they don't give us an adequate budget to deal with this situation, there's, there's nothing that we can do. There's not money that we can make appear out of nowhere. Mr. Andriana knows where there's eight million dollars hidden. I'd, I'd love to know about it as soon as possible because I certainly haven't seen it.
Thank you. The fifth, the fifth question goes to Virsha Monchi South. Medical professionals consider pandemic-related declines in child and adults adolescent mental health national, national crisis. Do you believe that Stanford Police Schools is doing enough to meet the social and emotional needs in these students? What policies, if any, should the Boral Education adopt to address this student mental health?
That's a great question. And certainly, and I'm glad that we're getting to mental health because really our kids can only learn and do all the other things that we want them to do at school if they have that mental and emotional support at school. And I know that our schools are doing quite a bit with kids to ensure that they have a sense of belonging, that they have deep relationships with their teachers, they have trusted adults within their school buildings and that they feel empowered to do their best learning. And we need to do more because unfortunately, these, the impacts of the pandemic are not going away anytime soon. And so even kids who maybe at first were okay now have, have different struggles. So we can't really take for granted that the pandemic impact at some point is just going to be over. We need to have ways of continually checking in with kids. And so going back to this idea of engagement and feedback loop, we have to find ways that we're really talking to kids and making sure that they have space to really share their experiences. When are they engaged in school? When are they not engaged in school? How do we bring some of those after-school activities, those things that get them so fired up and excited after school? How do we bring more of that into the school day? That won't solve obviously on its own severe mental health issues. But thinking about the overall emotional wellness of our kids, we need to find new and innovative and interesting ways to engage them so they.
Thirty seconds.
But when it comes to mental health specifically, we have to look at our staffing and we really have to hear from our teachers and our principals. Do we have adequate staff who is well-trained to deal with mental health issues in schools? We have to partner with our community-based organizations and leverage all the expertise we have within our community to ensure that kids who need mental health supports are really getting them.
Thank you. Joseph Andriana.
How you doing? So I want to answer that question in just a minute. The two that just came at and said that they would love for me to find money. Well, the first thing is forty-eight point five percent of our taxes goes directly to our schools with close to another ten percent going indirectly to our schools. So I'm pretty sure if we look at four point five, four over two years, there could be an opportunity with an audit to find the money. Now I want to go back to the question that we talked about, which was the medical professionals and the pandemic-related decline with mental health. This is a serious issue. And it's something that our kids are dealing with. I see it with my kids. When there's early childhood development, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, learning, reading, making friends, it's something that we need to get back and invest in our communities and the organizations to kind of help kids get back to a social element that they missed because they were locked up for two years because of the pandemic. Now, there's things like social emotional learning that we can go through that helps people to be more self-aware and social-aware of the groups and the people that are around them. There are things that can be done and we need to put policies in place to help our kids to get through this concern and also make sure that we are fully staffed, as I think Virsha brought up, to make sure that our kids get the attention they need when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, do please.
Thank you very much. I, I mean, this is an important topic and, you know, I, I, in, in many of the questions that all of us have answered throughout this campaign, COVID and its effects play an important part and this is no exception. But one of the other things, and you know, this is a perfect example of something of, of sort of a view of mine that's developed through the campaign and, and hearing my fellow candidates is that we, we need to do, the public school system and by extension the board, needs to do a better job of engaging with students as opposed to, you know, there's three to four layers of people in between the Board of Education, the nine of us and the students themselves. And I, I think we need to do that. We need, we need to bring that down. We need to more directly engage with students. And I think there are a number of ways we can do this from, you know, whether it's something based around smart, you know, Stanford Public Schools uses Google Suites, whether it's something based around that, whether it's based around our one-to-one laptop program, whether it's based around a smartphone app or something where we can more directly engage with students to see how they're doing. I've started to make it a practice to ask random students when I go visit a school, how, how you doing? How, how are you enjoying your experience here? And, you know, I've got a spectrum of answers, but they're all informative. And I think more than that, another thing that's been discussed with some regularity and I think it would be, it would be a great idea is to, is to actually have a student member of the Board of Representative, excuse me, of the Board of Education. So that we would have, you know, in our committee meetings and our board meetings, we would have a student voice who, you know, would be able to, to give that perspective that maybe otherwise we wouldn't have access to. So that, that's something I'd be very supportive of, of in the, in the next board.
Thank you. Taya McKeone.
Yeah, and I, I want to make, I know we've sort of gotten off topic. Is it okay if you just repeat the question really quick?
Sure. Medical professionals consider pandemic-related declines in child and adolescent men- mental health a national crisis. Do you believe that Stanford Police Schools is doing enough to meet the social emotional needs of these students? What policies, if any, should the Boral Education adopt to address the students' medical health?
Great, thank you.
Mental health, I'm sorry, mental health.
Yep. Thank you so much for that. You know, this is a, this is a hard one. Our kids have never endured such a long stretch of time where they've been bombarded with such psychological impacts like they were during COVID. But I think one thing that's really, really important for us to remember as adults is that our kids are resilient and they have such a purity about them. And it's just in, important for us to consider that when we are thinking about different policies or different ways to help them. I absolutely think we should focus on providing additional mental health resources. We have school psychologists and guidance counselors on staff. But are there times where we can open up doors from administrators additionally? And even Board of Ed members where people can have, or our students can have a discussion with another adult. There's a, a paraprofessional and a high school basketball coach at West Hill. His name is Ashton Dominique and he runs a series for students to have a place where they can really share their voice. And it's called That Talk. I've been able to attend a couple of them. And you see these kids really open up and have, one of the best things that happened recently when I was chatting with him, there was a student of his that came up and he asked him like, what do you feel when you see me? And he said, I, I, when I see you, I know that I can accomplish more than I thought I could. And like, it's like those types of programs and things, how can we fund more of that? Because those are the types of opportunities I think will make a real difference in children's social emotional learning.
Thank you. Michael Hyman.
I believe this is a, is a fantastic question for Stanford for, and it offers an opportunity for us in so many different ways. Because a child that is broken in many places, it, it is a difficult idea of having academic success when there are other problems, other emotional disturbances that are going on. We're talking, many of us are talking about making sure that we're dealing with the child. And I believe that that is ultimately the thing we want to do. But we have teachers and other professionals who need to have the appropriate type of training so that they can actually mentor, discuss, talk, hear out, listen with young people. The value of that is immense. I know this firsthand as the director, the former director at the Chester Addison Center, where we offered wraparound services and we had family advocates who worked with families, worked with the children, but also worked with the, the schools. So that there was a continuance about working with that child and making sure that parents were aware, but that we were conspiring. to create a situation where parents, teachers, the, the community center were all working for this child's behalf, on this child's behalf. When we do that, we can, can, can eliminate, what I've seen, some difficult issues for young people and allow them to thrive. But when we're siloed, when we're siloed and we're not calling on one another and we're not having those conversations, the child gets lost. We've got a fantastic opportunity. I'm hoping that as we try to find money, whether it is eight million or four million or whatever that number is, that we're going to invest in mental health and working with teachers and others so that they can do better as well.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
Oh, great, great question. I have a high school senior, as I mentioned, and I definitely saw some challenges during COVID. So I agree, we need to continue our work with emotional health and improving health of our students, especially when mental health issues are at an all-time high nationally. You know, I think we could do some things at, you know, various school levels. For example, in elementary schools, focus on more play and interaction. When we were at Schofield last week, the principal Clayton showed us all the pumpkins that they were, worked on as part of social emotional health. It's about kids getting together and communicating, learning to communicate again, because I think a lot of that was lost during COVID. A few years back, I guess we were ahead of the time at Stanford High School. Another courtyard that I was, I helped work on with was the Media Center Courtyard, and it was a really nice meditation space for students to go when they had a free period. And the Media Center specialists at the time, so I really liked to start a rock garden where kids could come in and paint rocks and, you know, sort of if they were having a trouble, a bad day, they could go in and, you know, just decompress. It was a nice safe place for students to be able to participate, and again, it was during a free school period. I think what we should do is engage our student government. I'm not sure if we have those at the middle school level, but I do know I do know we have them at the high school, and let's invite them to a Board of Ed meeting. Let's have a roundtable with all the, the Student Governance Council members, because let's see how they are feeling. I know I could tell you this much at the high school level and probably, you know, below, safety is on the top of, of everyone's minds, and I deal with it every day. It's a struggle. And it's hard to see your child, you know, afraid to, to, to go to school. So I think there's a lot more that we can do, and
Thank you. Thank you. The sixth question goes to Diana McCooney. When we hear about equity in schools, there are strong opinions on all sizes. What is your position on equity in schools? Which equity issues are due the most concern? And how would you work from the Boral Education level to address them?
Sorry, I was just hearing some debate between my husband and my daughter about bedtime outside of my door. So I think the question's around the equity and diversity policy, just the stance and what was the last part?
Which equity issues are you the most concerned? And how would you work from the Boral Education level to address them?
So I think broadly speaking, the diversity and equity policy talks about, you know, believing that the board certainly plays a part in the responsibility for student success. It's also shared by our district staff, our families, our community, and, and also our students' own efforts. And I fully agree with that. There's other parts that talk about SPS's commitment to to ensuring that every student has success and meets our, our mission and vision statements. Those things all make sense to me. I think there's places where we are focusing a lot on the color of one's skin when we talk about opportunity gaps between white students and students of color. And, and I want to overlay the data that we have with students that are English language learners, which may include students that were receiving from the Ukraine or Afghanistan. I want to understand how it, it looks like for overlapped with students that are on free or reduced-price lunch. I want to make sure that we're really thinking about holistically help all of our students with the needs that they need specifically. And I don't know if that's addressed in the equity policy today.
Thank you. Daniel, do please.
Thank you. I think that most equity and diversity is an extraordinarily important concept for us as a school system to weave throughout everything that we do. I supported the equity and diversity policy when we passed it, and it was, it was a long time coming. I think the area, however, that we need to focus most strongly, our efforts as far as equity is concerned in, is our, our efforts toward reading. Ultimately, the teaching a child to read is probably the most important thing that the Stanford Public Schools or any schools do. If, if we have one hundred percent of our students able to read on grade level by the third or fourth grade, we would be the envy of every school system in the country. And so equity, that equity to me is the idea that we need to support students in a way that helps everybody achieve their goals, or said less eloquently, everybody needs to get a fair shake. And because of challenges, whether they're physical, whether they're emotional, whether they're economic, whether they're racial, because of setbacks that people have had in their lives. We need to be cognizant of that, and we need to be sensitive to that. And we need to use that information to construct programs, and reading in particular, which will help students equitably
Diane, thirty seconds.
Achieve their academic goals and get to where they need to be. Because if we can do that, then we are a successful school system. So I think very often the concept of equity gets politicized, and it's unfortunate, because really what it is, is just saying, you know, how should the school system give every student a fair shake?
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
I thank you for the question. I, I support an inclusive environment in my household, and I expect it across the board where we are. This is why I chose to live in Stanford. With or without a policy, we should have an inclusive or supportive environment for all of our students. With that being said, I think we have work to do to include families, to make sure all are included, as we discussed tonight. I think a lot of the discussion tonight was making sure our families were feeling part of this community. However, with the recent curriculum audit results, eighty percent of our schools do not have a curriculum. How many generations of students will move through our school system without a meaningful curriculum? Not having standardized curriculum is very concerning. I often wonder, is this why our Sback scores are much lower than the Connecticut State average? And they were on decline prior to COVID. We as a district have a lot of work to do, and it needs to start now. We need to make sure we're implementing programs and partnering, partnering with our community-based organizations. We need to reach all students and provide a quality academic education, and if needed, tutoring support to help them reach their goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Virsha Monshi South.
I'll echo a couple of ideas that have been shared, one being that when I think of equity, what I think about is that all students get what they need in order to be successful, and that is different for every kid. And so teachers, school leaders, district leaders have to have ways of knowing where kids are academically and what they might need in order to achieve academic success. We do need to be working towards closing the achievement gap, and we can't debate whether that exists or not. We can look at the data and see that there are certainly gaps amongst demographic groups when it comes to our academic data. We need to make sure that all of our kids feel safe in schools too, and look at what data would tell us whether or not they do feel safe. For example, we need to look at our suspension and expulsion data. We know that suspensions can have long-term impacts on students. And what I hear regularly is that ten-day suspensions are being doled out to students. Students are being arrested at schools. We need to look at that data really carefully and consider how that data aligns with the demographics in our district. What we know is that black students in particular are being suspended and arrested at rates that are really disproportionate to their presence in the district, and that's an issue. That's something that we can't be afraid of. That's something that we really need to dig into and work towards solutions around, rather than debating whether or not it exists. We also need to look at access to classes. Who is in the honors and AP classes? Who has access to those classes? And are we being transparent about how to get into those classes? What is necessary in order to have those opportunities? And finally, I would say we need to look back at our teachers. Do they reflect our student population? We know that they don't in terms of race and ethnicity. So we need to learn about the experiences of our teachers of color and understand what does it take to retain them? And what does it take to diversify our teacher population, so their students can really feel seen when they're in their school buildings?
Thank you. Joseph from Deanna.
Thank you so much. As a board member, we are to establish and monitor policies, policies for effectiveness. And we are to embody the policies. And you know, funny thing about equity is it continues to be misinterpreted. Equity is to ensure that our students get the needs that they need to be focused on equal outcomes, and it should not be leveraged by parties to try to turn one person against the other. It should be about getting our students the equal opportunity to succeed. Dan, you're right. It is about being fair and impartial. And it's making sure that the kids that need services to get equal outcomes are getting that. There are kids who are in special ed, and they need more money or tools or equipment to get to the equal outcome that others will have. There are things like translations as well, to make sure that we are funding the schools to allow for equal outcomes. When we talk about AP classes and some of the despairing optics on who's in AP or not, well, why not do what's done in some other states? And make it an opt-in. That way, we open it up to everybody, and they can take it during a study hall and make sure that we can see if we can get some kids to get more credits and save money, which is equitable when they want to go to college and be more affordable for families that may not be able to afford it.
Thank you. Michael Hyman.
I will join my colleagues that have said that we need to look at the data. We need to dig down deep in it, but I, I would also go a bit further, that we need to have the will that once we have actually analyzed the data, that we've actually looked at it, that we actually do something about it. My concern is that with equity, that we've had an inequitable situation in Stanford for years. And, and maybe there are people who would disagree with me or argue with me about it, but there are a ton of other folk who know that it's true. And so that if we're to do something about it, we need a board that is committed to doing that and making it happen. One member of our board, current member of our board, the leader of the Republican Party, has said that he is temperamentally averse to anything that has to do with diversity, equity, or inclusion. And I would have to say that he's hand-selected at least three people here on the screen who are running for the Board of Ed, and I want to know whether these folks are really committed to equity when the board member who brought them to the table is saying that he wants to see it done away with. If anything, if the parents, if the families in Stanford are going to work hard and work together as a town collaboratively, we need to make sure that we've got a board that is on board and committed to ensuring an equitable situation for all of our students, whether they're the forty-eight percent, whether they're the sixteen percent, or whether they are some other group. Every child in this town deserves better than that, and, and we need to make sure that our board reflects that.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. At this time, we invite you, each of you, to offer two-minute closing statement. We will begin with Virsha Monshi South.
Thank you. Well, thank you again to our hosts for creating this opportunity for us to come together and for bringing in questions from the community. You know, I've heard so many great ideas during this forum, and it's really energizing to hear everyone's passion and commitment to our schools. We talked about teacher recruitment, budget, reaching and engaging all of our families, so many important issues, and I really look forward to continuing these conversations. And so as we look forward to next week's election, I ask you for your vote. A vote for me, a vote for Virsha, is a vote for our students, our parents, and our teachers. And while I am running as a Democrat, a vote for Virsha also means a vote for collaboration across party lines, listening to each other and working towards solutions. Stanford Public Schools slogan is excellence is the point. And I really would like to contribute to increasing excellence in our schools by focusing on what's most important, what's highest leverage for the best outcomes for all of our students. And what I bring with me is the perspective of a parent, the expertise of an educator, and the strategic focus of a consultant. I would be incredibly proud to serve on our Board of Education, and I hope that I've earned your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane McCooney.
Thank you all again, PT Council, Cradle to Career, certainly for hosting us and having this great opportunity for parents to hear a little bit more from every candidate. I'm very appreciative of the time and know that our closing statements are between you and the rest of your night, so I'll try and be brief. I do want to comment on Michael Hyman's comment that Josh Assis brought us to the table. I can speak for myself, but I'm sure I also speak for Lisa and Joseph when I say that we all stood up and said it's time for us to give back to our communities. There was no coaxing by anybody to put us up on the board. We're excited to be running. We've been running as a team. There are three really important seats up for grabs. We hope that you'll vote for all three of us. There's a lot of conversation that Stanford Public Schools for the last twenty years has been, that has had the same sort of results, which are lackluster. The board has had a majority Democrat leadership for the last decades that we can remember. So if we want to, to point any fingers, I certainly hope that we're considering that. But I do think that we have a lot of really concerned parents, three of which we are and here really asking for your vote. And hope that if you really want to connect with us one-on-one, we're also happy to do that. We've been knocking on doors, having a lot of conversations. So please reach out to us. You can follow us on Instagram at Stanford Parents for BOE. And look forward to meeting you all. Thank you.
Michael Hyman.
Well, certainly, I am a fighter and an activist. I do believe in reaching across the aisle. But I also will not have any compunction about standing up and saying what I believe is right. So for all of these years, I've heard people come and say that they're going to help make changes, and they haven't done it. And I think that our, our people in this town need and deserve better than that. The forty-eight percent of Hispanic students, I worked at Chester Addison, where when I arrived there, the center was ninety-five percent African-American. It grew to the point where it was almost fifty-fifty. We worked with parents together. We found a way to bridge those gaps and to make sure that there was a sense of belonging for everyone. I'm that type of person. I've disagreed with the superintendent and the police chief of this town, but I'm in a working relationship with both of them. I believe that members of the Board of Education can do no less than to take on the hard challenges and to make sure that when they're doing it, they're being truthful and they're being honest and direct with the people. And, and when we make mistakes, that we own up to that and move forward together. Let's find a way to make it work. It's only, it is the only thing that's important because it helps our students along the way. I believe that every child in I believe that every child in this town can learn. I've been committed to that in. That um, I believe that it is important for us to move forward. I believe that it's important that you use your vote and your time to get an activist, an educator, someone who understands the community. And is willing to roll up his sleeves and do the work, but do the work collaboratively with everyone else. Thank you. I would appreciate your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Daniel, do please.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I have to echo a lot of what everyone has said tonight in all of the responses. I think the responses have been very thoughtful. Um, and you know, as I mentioned before, I always appreciate the opportunity to hear new viewpoints. And uh, you know, even this series of, I guess forums, they're not really debates that we've all done as candidates have been. A really great opportunity to exchange some ideas and I think is probably something that we should institute as a board. Our more, you know, informal discussions, listening sessions or just rotating opportunities for us to interact with. You know, whether it's other members of the government or the public or, you know, what have you. But I've, I've really enjoyed this opportunity tonight and um, you know, unfortunately, our system in Connecticut only allows us to like a fixed number of people. There can only be nine people on the board and, you know, I think any one of the people that has spoken here tonight would make a very thoughtful board member. Um, but I also think there are some contrasts in how it, as we would approach uh, governance on the board. And how we would approach our responsibilities as board members. Over the past three years, it's been one of the greatest honors of my life to represent the people of the city of Stanford on the Board of Education. And to do so in a way that's thoughtful and in consideration of every student. Uh, whatever their ability, whatever their goals, whatever their life situation may be and to create a more. To create a, a more um welcoming environment for all students. And so I would uh, just in, in these closing moments, ask you, the voters, to be supportive of the entire Democratic ticket, Bershka, myself and Michael. Um, we have the vision to move the city of Stanford Public School System to where it needs to be. And, and we have the willingness, we have the skills and we have uh, the desire to do so. So thank you all for listening. I hope you have a great evening and uh, I hope that you have a, a great, great day.
Thank you. Lisa Butler.
I want to thank the PT Council for spending the time tonight and asking such thoughtful questions. I also um, you know, want to say, we heard so many great ideas and positions as to what each candidate would bring to the table. And it really is about a community. I want to remind everyone that I'm a Stanford mom. I want all kids to have the same access to a quality education here in Stanford. I want them to be able to succeed post-high school, whether that's a path to college, trade school, direct to work. We have a lot of work to do. It's not going to be easy. With our post-COVID Sback scores, we need to invest at the elementary and middle school levels now in order to alleviate future learning loss. We can achieve this by adding additional tutoring services to our, for our students. We need to put a curriculum structure in place so all schools are teaching the same material by grade level. And we need to bring midterms and finals back so that those going to college know how to take a cumulative test. We need to make sure all our schools are safe from physical and sa- uh, from, from a physical and safety standpoint. The skillset that I would bring to the table is making sure all parents and teachers in Stanford have a voice at the table because your voice counts. It's time for a change on the board. Elect parents who have school-age kids who use Stanford Public Schools or plan to use the. Stanford Public Schools, in Diane's case, not private school in Greenwich. In order to affect real change in our school system. So November 8th is coming, please, just all I ask is research your candidates. And make sure you spread the word and tell everyone to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph from Diana.
Yeah, I want to thank all of you, the PT Council, Cradle to Career, and all those who attended. And for the great energy that all of you are putting into the chat and into the schools. I also want to thank you all for staying to hear the final words that I am providing you today. I want to get the opportunity to represent all of Stanford. And make sure that we do what's best for our kids, our families, our teachers and all of Stanford. Diane, Lisa and myself are just that. Please go to our Instagram page, which is Stanford Parents for BOE or find my Instagram as well. So we can try to engage and continue to have this communication. As we want to represent you all. So on November 8th, please give us and myself the opportunity to represent Stanford to the best that we can. And give the best education that Stanford can give our kids and take care of our teachers and help our community. Thank you and have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, candidates. That will conclude our program tonight. Please take a few moments to complete the post-event survey that was just here in the chat. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight and also I'd like to say thank you to our contributors. Who made this possible this evening for those people who need more, who need interpretation in Spanish. To learn more about the board education candidates or those who are running for elective office in Stanford. Please visit StanfordElections.com and please make sure to vote one week from now on November 8th. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you all. Cheers. Bye.